Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And did everyone here?
Echo, echo, echo.
Yeah, wow, it sounds authoritative. Okay.
Booming.
Yeah, alright, maybe I'll back up just a little bit. Alright, as Jody mentioned, for the benefit of those joining us online, please be sure to speak closely into the microphone and welcome everybody. Okay, jumping right into this, we will convene the public hearing portion regarding the notice of intent to vacate a portion of public roads. Do we have anyone here?
Hold back the crowd, Leesel, please.
Alright, anybody here that would care to make any comments? Great, thank you. Alright, doesn't appear that anybody online has anything to say. Am I reading that right, Jody? Are there screens? I just don't know. On Zoom, sometimes there are screens that don't show up, so I just wanna make sure that nobody's got their hand raised. Okay, alright, well then we will close the public hearing portion and move on to the work session. Item two, proposal to vacate a portion of public roads. So, as Ben mentioned, this was discussed in our last meeting. So I don't know if there are any thoughts or questions or further discussion to be had. Dave, I know that you and I got-
I just saw your text, so do you want me to do that?
Well, I thought that Jeremy raised some good points, so yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
So... The hard part with these comments is that the Summit Creek group have been with us a long time and we like them. So I wanna make sure that these comments are not directed towards them, they're more of a general comment that Jeremy is raising about HOAs in general. And just some of the problems that come up with-
Jeremy Buckbink?
Uh, no, Jeremy Searle.
Okay, Searle, just making sure that we have which Jeremy-
So he's speaking from the perspective of a road engineer, okay? So here's essentially what he said is, "I can't tell you how many times I have seen cities struggle with private roads that the developer promised to own and maintain, but did not." Typically what happens is an HOA is put in place and they maintain the road for 20 to 30 years. At that point, the road needs to be reconstructed. The HOA doesn't have enough money to do that, so they don't. The road falls apart and all the citizens complain to the city that they need to take it over and fix it. By that point, the developer is long gone. Eventually, the city gives in and has to pay lots of extra money that they were not expecting to completely rebuild the road. It becomes a huge burden. Anyway, you get the idea.
Well, we look at, what's that other road that we just had to repair because the-
Northview.
Yeah, Northview Circle.
Northview Circle.
That was the developer's idea.
That's different, but that's-
Similar.
They have a road to fix.
We didn't have the bond to fix it.
We didn't, but that's a completely different situation because that was-
Bonded.
Uh, no, it was the city accepting a road when they shouldn't have.
Right.
It was our inspector not inspecting it. But, this is-
That echo still-
This has to do with HOAs, and I know that Summit Creek has made comment a number of times that by state law, they're maintaining enough money to do the maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that's great and I'm grateful that they're doing that. Jeremy's point, which I thought was really, really good, was he's suggesting that, and this is what this- He says, "In fact, a city dealing with this very problem has recently asked me to update their ordinances to address this problem." Here's some of the texts that I put together for them. And I think this text, it, we should, honestly, we should adopt it in our ordinances. It kinda says, "One, private roads are not open or intended for use by the general public." So private roads are a really bad idea for any kind of a through road. You would never do a private road for a through road. That's kinda point one. "Private road standards include maximum average annual daily traffic, 300 vehicles per day, maximum development, 30 units or lots, maximum length 600 feet, maximum right-of-way 50 feet, maximum speed limit 25 miles an hour." Again, this is ordinance text that he's putting together for this other city. So we can certainly play with those numbers however we feel like we need to. But the other thing that they, he basically said is, the maintenance plan that we, in the ordinance, you would say, annual maintenance, semi-annual maintenance activities, medium-term activities, and long-term activities. Different things that the city would require even of the private road, to make sure that the private road is being kept up to some kind of standards. And then included in there, some kind of text saying that if there's ever a case where the private road would become a public road, that it would have to be brought up to as, not as new, but it would have to be-
The standard.
Whatever the standard is before the city would be willing to take it over.
So that we don't get it in shambles, basically?
Right, right. And so again, that's kinda the idea, is to just put ordinance in place that protects the city, still allowing, you know, Summit Creek to do what they're planning on doing, but this just covers the city 20, 30 years down the road.
Thank you.
Is that enough summary?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
Okay, any further comment or discussion?
I find that interesting and helpful. I'm thinking, they will have pressure from the city continually to maintain the roads at least as well as we do in the city. But additionally, I think more of their pressure is going to come from their residents who live on those roads. That will be a huge, you know, desire for them to maintain them.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, again, these are kind of general issues with, that Jeremy was raising with HOAs. I do believe that there's gonna be pressure for the HOA to maintain the roads. I think what we, what made sense to me was to both have that going on and having the city covered. I think those are, those are the kind of the things that made a lot of sense to me.
And Doral, as far as your concern or your comment, I also think that, you know, in 20, 30 years, that may not be the case. I mean, because it may be that they would direct all their ire toward the city, just because it's kind of a long-forgotten obligation on the part of the HOA or the developer. And now it's like, well, this is a city road, or this is a road that is potentially to be adopted by the city. So I think that was another Jeremy's points that, and I think it's a valid one, because-
I have a question. So if we're looking, and like you say, it's for all forgotten at that time, so we're saying that in that agreement, in disagreement, we would say that the HOA, if they dissolve, would then have to have the roads to standard before we could accept them back as public roads.
Yeah, and I wanna be careful how you just said what you did. It's not a part of any standard, it's not a part of an agreement. We would actually put this in our ordinances.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be-
So any private roads-
Any private roads.
That would be relinquished to the city to become public roads would then have to be, at this point, not just necessarily for this HOA, but for any HOAs in the future as well. I like that.
Yeah.
It would never make sense for us to be able to put a clause in place that allows them to give us ground, which was a bad thought.
And can such an ordinance be retro for the ones that we have already declared or authorized to be private roads?
I mean, again, we haven't, what this basically does, which we don't have in our ordinances today-
Right.
Is we don't have a path for a private road to become public. There's no path at all.
Right.
What Jeremy's suggesting is that we would put a path in our ordinances, is kind of a catch clause. So if it ever did go that direction, we know exactly how it should go.
So an ordinance that would be both ways, allowing for private roads and also allowing for private roads to then become public.
Right.
That makes sense.
If we developed this further, would it be appropriate to have a Summit Creek representative with the planning commission to work through these issues? I mean, if we're in a change in ordinance, wouldn't that help all voices be heard as an idea?
Yeah, well, I certainly think they're the most pressing party of interest, but I think, you know, this isn't just about Summit Creek, though this is-
No, no.
Yeah, I think that would be a fair, fair thing to offer.
I mean, if they wanted to invite, it would be, it might be good input, is my thought.
Sure. Wayne? Wayne, you'll have to come speak into a microphone, though.
That echo is still kind of weird.
So that we can echo. We wanna make sure you're echoing.
Question.
Oh, you're really echoing.
Bit of a, I guess devil's advocate a little bit. Is a city willing to abide by that same standard as we're requiring Summit Creek? As far as yearly maintenance, keeping up the roads, et cetera, throughout the city? In the past, we haven't exempted the city when we talk about fire regulations and things like that. We've put the city under the same mandate, same requirements as our citizens relating to those things. And so my question is, if we're going to require anybody that has private roads to do a certain amount of maintenance and upkeep, et cetera, on them, to keep them in good working order, is the city willing to do the same thing with the city roads? And my question is, I don't think we have the funds to do it.
I don't either, but Wayne, I don't like that argument at all, because I don't think you should not have requirements for maintenance on roads just because the city can't afford to do it either. I mean, that seems like, yeah, let's not paint our house because the neighbor can't paint their house. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me, but what I do hear you saying is, I mean, we ought to look at the standards that are, that Jeremy has outlined, and we ought to evaluate those for the rest of the city as well. And that's a fair statement, but I don't wanna get into this, let's not require it of an HOA if the city can't afford it either.
I don't disagree with that, but let's have that understanding, that that's what we're doing.
Well, I think ultimately, the big concern is that we not inherit a road-
That's it, yeah.
That is flawed, and so, I mean, if it's, if this is the maintenance that is required, I mean, we could probably even be looser on that language if we had to be, but at the end of the day, you know, we just need to make sure we're not getting a crumbling road, or, you know, a road that doesn't, you know, it's not up to standards, yeah.
No, correct. As I've looked into this a number of years ago, it's the city's option whether they want to take a private road and make it public or not. There's nothing that says that there's a requirement for the city to do that. So I don't think it's bad to incorporate that into an ordinance, so we have that ordinance to guide us in that process. But let's not, we're not required to take a public road back at any time, and we can put the standards out there that it has to meet before that we're, before we're willing to do that.
Except we are required to do it for our citizens. So if HOA is disbanded and nobody's taking care of the road, we have a duty to our citizens, so in a way, we are required to take it back, because we have to take care of it for them.
There's nothing to be said with that.
Okay, well, and I mean, right now, it's just a discussion point, so as far as crafting an ordinance or, you know, taking that next step, yeah. Would you just might speak into the microphone?
So, two things, I think, you know, Jeremy has some valid points, I'm not gonna discount those, because I think they can be considered, but I think that relates more to a, the possibility of a developing ordinance related to private roads versus the vacating of the roads, which is the subject of the matter today. So I think, you know, if you wanna pass that on to the planning commission or do something, I think it's a different topic, right? The other thing is, just so that you know, we have to go through the reserve study on a regular basis, right? We have to show people before they buy a house, before they buy a lot, the percentage of reserves that are funded, that reserve includes the roads, and its long-term, you know, cost. And what will happen, both to a developer and to the ultimate, you know, owners inside the HOA, is that you will have a diminution of value, sorry, Mayor, that's probably not the right word, but- Because their houses will be worth less because the HOA is not funded. And if people think that they're gonna have to have all of a sudden a reserve call, okay, of tens of thousands of dollars per home, or potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars per home, they will not buy in that development. So we're preventing that, you know, we're already, we're gonna be fully funded by, I think, it's like three years from now? So, you know, and then as new roads get added, we'll start, you know, we'll increase the funds in that road, so that, our job, right, is, as the developer of a quality development, is make sure that when somebody reviews that reserve study, you know, they see that it's fully funded. They know that there won't be a call that way. So, you know, it really helps to show the value of the community, and so that's kinda, just a little bit of side note on the inner workings of at least our HOA. Jeremy has some valid points. There are some HOAs that are not well-run, you know, I think the city had one a long, long time ago that, you know, is probably, you know, in the back of people's minds here, that's not what we're trying to do. So I just wanted to give you that feedback.
Yeah, the one point I'm going to make, Steve, about what you said is, I totally agree with you for the most part. The one thing that I found in Jeremy's points that was really good is the whole idea of private roads should not be through roads. And so when we're doing the development, and I know you're not planning on that, so that's not an issue, but we just need to make sure when we're, when we're looking at the plans and doing the preliminary plan review, that we just make sure that-
They're not through roads.
Yeah, I mean-
One of them is a loop.
Wait, now let's, we gotta make sure that we're attentive to the online audience, so let's keep the comments one at a time. So Janet, did you have something you were gonna say?
I thought one of them was a loop, one of the roads.
So I-
So does that define as a through road?
Yeah, I mean, of course, that would be an interesting thing to find out, is what is the definition? I think, you know, Jeremy, in the numbers that he was giving, he was basically giving traffic numbers as to how many vehicles would be using a particular road each day. And I think we could maybe use those as a little bit of a standard for a through road as opposed to not a through road.
Hand up.
But I don't think they're intending on any of those roads being through roads.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
Did we all receive Jeremy's comments, because I don't, I don't find them in my things.
No, it was sent to Glenn Anderson, actually, and Dave and I were copied on it, so, and it was not a formal comment, yeah, of course.
I would like to have a copy of what his concerns were.
Yeah, just grab it. Yeah. Okay, Buck, did you have a comment that you'd like to make?
Poor Jody.
Oh, Bucky, sorry.
Sorry, I was on me and I, I couldn't let myself off. Yeah, I appreciate you letting me make comments. From what I understand, these roads that we're asking to be private have been, you know, unfinished for nearly 15 years. So part of what we're trying to do here is help the city fix a problem. I just wonder if Chris's analysis or comments took that information.
Yeah, let me just speak to that, because Steve mentioned it too, and I'm sensing a little bit of apprehension, like we're not going to consider the vacating of the roads because of this additional information. I don't think that's at all.
Just discussion.
That, it's more- Yeah, fair enough. So that's at least not my intention at all to mix those two topics. It's more, okay, we're going to vacate some roads, and because of that, some of them are gonna be made private, so now let's think, you know, try and think two or three steps ahead rather than just in the moment, so that's it.
And just to, this was something we, Glenn Anderson provided a summary on the vacating of those lots, or I mean, of those roads, and so this was just a response to that.
To that report.
And so that's why we brought it together, but yeah, your point is well-taken, that these are not the same issue, so, and this is just a discussion anyway, we're not crafting legislation here. Alright, any other comments from anyone here?
Any, well, there, I mean, getting back to just the vacating part, I mean, there's, there's, I would think there would be some questions about that, at least, you know, the financials and some of the analysis that was done. Are there, wow, okay, maybe everybody's just like, cool with it?
No, I'm shocked we didn't have public.
Yeah, I was, especially after we put the transparency report out there and everything, I thought that we would have some public comment.
Maybe they understand it as well as we do.
Yeah, we have, you know, we questioned the numbers last time, and I think Ben addressed that. We, you know, we talked about it quite a bit after Wayne and Ben talked to it last time. So I felt like the questions had been answered according to that.
Yeah, but I mean, I think we're getting value for it, and-
I think we're getting huge value, so I'm just gonna put it out there, I'm very much in favor of this, and I appreciate the fact that Summit Creek was willing to kind of think outside the box, and granted, it benefits them, I get that. But it also really, really benefits the city and makes, kinda makes a win-win for both of us, so, but I just wanna make sure that, you know, the residents understand that, yes, we are giving up some roads and they have value. And, but at the same time, Summit Creek has agreed to do a lot of the work that we honestly can't afford right now, nor would we be able to afford in the near future. And so it does feel like a win-win to me, so it's all good, but I just, I wanna make sure the residents don't come back and say, "You never talked about that."
Well, and if they have to wait on us, they might be waiting quite a while, right? If they have to wait for us to finish the road, especially with our current budget.
Yeah.
I think for me, as long as that one manhole access is still available, that's in that one street we talked about with Corbett was concerned about, as long as he can get to it with his vac truck when needed, that would be my only hiccup.
And that problem was addressed, right?
Yep, exactly, so as long as that's still on your radar, then I see nothing but honestly benefit, so.
Does Wayne have, do you have any concerns about it, planning commission, are they good?
Yeah, we got the letter.
Wayne, can you use the microphone?
Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay.
Those present.
Thank you.
Alright, very good, well, then we'll move on.
Mayor, before we move on-
Yeah.
I'd like to welcome our two students here, Leesel Adams and Samstein, visiting on, because they really just wanna come to Woodland Hills City Council, or their teacher asked them, or demanded they come and do a report. But either way, we are happy that you, we have an audience tonight, so thanks for being here.
Absolutely.
I'm assuming Leesel is the daughter of Byron?
Byron.
Marcy. Two great people, yeah.
You better.
Citizens, yeah.
She was a baby when Byron served here.
Since I last saw you, you've changed, you know, I remember this.
Anyway, alright, well, welcome, we're glad you're here. And hopefully this won't change your view on public service going forward. Alright, item three, proposed ordinance amending Title I, Chapter Seven, regarding indemnifying city officials, employees, and volunteers.
I think it's much needed.
I agree.
So I'm in favor of it.
Any other comments or questions or concerns?
I, it's my understanding this is something that's pretty standard in other communities, right? So it's one of those things that we're lacking, that we need to just add to our ordinances, so.
Currently, if you were elected, there is some identification, but not necessarily city officials and definitely not volunteers. So this helps us have, we are a city that's run by volunteers on a lot of levels, and we are having some that are saying, "I'm not going to serve because of," and, or some that might have been unofficially threatened because of their positions. And I think that we owe it to them when they put their time and effort in there to have an ordinance like that.
Yeah, and my understanding is that there was already an obligation and even a default rule that there was indemnification. But this is something that just makes it abundantly clear that we won't dangle you if you're working on behalf of the city and-
Well, and if you look at like our volunteer firemen, I mean, I think it's really crucial.
Yeah, I really like it, too. I assumed it was already that way, and maybe it was for elected people, I don't know the details. I was, I've assumed for 10 years that that's the way it worked, but I didn't know it might not have applied to employees, so it's really important to me to have it. I just have to say, though, and the reason I have a funny look on my face is, is there anyone in the community going to think, "Well, it's a fine time to be doing that," you know? That's the only thing I'll just say out loud, and I don't, I don't like us to do things reactive, you know, like, like it appears, even though I think it's needed, and we need to do it.
Proactive, because there's nobody on the line right now.
I see it that way, too.
Being proactive and allowing those who do serve, whether it's the fire department, or the finance committee, or parking trails, that we know that we are asking them to serve on our behalf, and we don't want them to feel like they're looking over their shoulders. I mean, if they do something criminal, of course, that's something, that's a whole different ballgame, but just doing what we've asked them to do.
Well, and, I mean, there's no question, these are unique times for our city, too. I mean, it's, you know, this is, this is not an issue of trying to cover our tracks. This is an issue of, why would anybody ever agree to do any service for the city, myself included? I mean, you know, this is something that no one wants to absorb personal liability or the threat of personal liability, and, I mean, defending yourself in illegal action is a very expensive prospect. And so, I mean, you would end up with mass resignations, and so it's something that I just don't think as a city we can function without. And, yeah, I mean, is it something that was spurred by the current climate? I don't think that there's any denying that, but it doesn't mean that the city doesn't owe an obligation to those that work to serve the entire community. I think they owe them that, and so I'm off with it.
I have seen volunteers quit when we were disbanning WOPA, that's, that was a big problem.
Yeah.
They were all under threat of lawsuits, personal, so this is really a good thing to do.
Any other comments? Okay. Next item. Road maintenance, cracked ceiling of roads. Councilmember Hilliard, on behalf of himself and Corbett Stevens?
For Corbett, but yeah, I'll take it. So current 2022 budget is got 30,000 allocated for tar and shoulder repair, and then 80,000 allocated for wages to get this thing done. We haven't been able to do them for the last couple of years for a number of reasons, but predominantly, it comes back to our getting people that can do it. It's quite a crew-intensive process, because you've got people shutting down sections of the road, directing traffic, driving trucks, moving the compressor hose, somebody coming behind and tarring, it's extensive. So Corbett has looked into another couple of different options. So the current approval is 135,500. And so, like I said, the 80 was intended for the crack seal, and so that's all the different things I just talked about. He says, "Due to the lack of seasonal employees and the-" And so that's all the different things I just talked about. He says, due to the lack of seasonal employees and the proposed contract from the Echols paving, so he, Corbett went to Echols, who is a government, or a government contract, and found out that he can actually get it for less money than we budgeted for, and which would have cost us to get this thing done, and they'll be able to move fairly quickly. We found that the tar is mid-May. Corbett also reached out to, I think it's 1-800-ASFALT, and they may even be given, giving us a better rate. I'm not sure exactly what that would entail from the state contract versus, but it would be even a better rate. So we could actually save quite a bit of money by going with a professional entity coming in and doing their crack seal, which will get it done quicker. Our people won't be bogged down by that time suck, and it'll be cheaper.
So I guess I'm confused. So it's a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
We should fix all the roads.
Yep.
No question. The confusion comes, are you, are you, are you like advocating the budget? Is that what you're doing? Or
So this is already in the 2022 budget.
I get that, which means May is not in the, May is not in the ballpark. This is, this is in this
This is the approved budget already. So this is already on the books. It's ready to go.
Yeah, this is informational.
Brent can sign off on all this.
And I already have.
Corbett wanted you guys all to know what's going on.
Oh, okay.
This is informative.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Yep, so it'll save us money that we're currently already budgeted and have, and we can use elsewhere. So.
Yeah, and 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 I told Corbett I wanted to present it to the council just to get feedback before he pulls the trigger on it, but he's gonna move forward with it tomorrow. Just because I, you know, I value your input. So if you have any causes for concern, certainly welcome them, but
Any, any money we can spend to maintain roads is a good thing.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Ben.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, item five, update on proposed 2023 fiscal year budget. Chris is here, and I said this before the meeting, I am hoping I get a pass or two. I've got a pass or two left because of inexperience, but I did not get the budget, the proposed budget to the council members until today. So we actually, we should probably table this, but Chris, maybe if you want to just give some high-level discussion, and then when everyone has had a chance to review it, then we can revisit it next council meeting.
Absolutely. So really, there's, well, I'm not going to hear myself, but the budget that the mayor gave to you this afternoon, there's just a few changes from what the budget was when you guys, when we had our budget meeting a couple of weeks ago. After a budget meeting, I went to the finance committee, the finance committee made some recommendations with, with Dave and Mike Taylor and some of those people. Now, the budget you received today is is kind of a derivative of that and plus some input from the mayor. We can go over it pretty quickly, look at it, and then set a time for the public hearing, and then a vote for your, for the council to consider. So I'm gonna pull it up on screen here if I can get the right. Jody, I assume I can share?
Do you have a round?
Oh, no, that's the sun reflecting off of the house across the street.
You don't have a selfie lamp?
No, it's that's what's called sun, guys.
We don't know what that is.
Okay, let's see if I can get this to share here.
Yeah, someone thought you were driving the plow last night and you never showed up.
Oh, sorry, I definitely wasn't driving the, well, the plow was off the road I was driving, but okay, can you guys see this? Okay, it is kind of small. I cannot make it any bigger. I apologize. But we're gonna focus on the last four columns. First column column, hopefully you have on your printed materials, says 2023 employee requested budget. Do you see that? Then there's another budget line, I, or budget column called Budget Revision One. And then the last one's called Mayor Proposed Budget of March 30th. I don't know if that showed up all over on yours or not.
Yes, that shows up on ours.
Fantastic. Okay, so just, just as a recap really quickly, the budget that the employees requested, had we had all the money, it would have been an additional $700,000 in requests that the employees wanted for road repairs and buildings and those kind of things. We then worked on the budget, got it down to a zero base, meaning we got the budget, balanced everything out, but it created a huge tax burden on the citizens. Like, we would be raising property taxes quite a bit, from $770,000 to over a million dollars in property taxes. And the mayor wasn't willing to to go that high. So where we are today, after the finance committee meeting and presentation with the mayor, is to do a, either keep the tax rate level or raise it just slightly to bring in some additional revenues to cover the expenses. That's one of the changes that we did. So originally, I don't know if you see my green dot or not, originally it was 770,000 projected property tax increase, or property taxes, to $857,000. Now, we won't know till June how much the assessor has assessed properties in Woodland Hills versus how much the tax rate's gonna be, and how much we would have to look at keeping it level or raising it. Those are just questions we can't answer right now until, until June.
Why don't they give that to us prior to, I mean, they give it to us just a couple of days before our vote? Why is that?
That's a good question.
Because it's Utah County. Is it just Utah County or is it the state?
The state, this all comes from the state of Utah, but Utah County, I believe, has to turn in and do certain things so the state can do the calculations.
It makes it really difficult for us to even plan when we don't even know our rate till the day we vote.
Yeah. When we had, if we had big budgets like certain cities, we might be able to fudge around a little bit, but we're so tight, it's, it makes it difficult. So that was one of the main things. I'm gonna scoot, scoot down the page, and Carrie, I don't know what page this is gonna be on, but we're gonna go down to the expenses now, because that was the major revenue change, was the property taxes. Then if you go to mayor and council wages, that page right there, they have a new line called Council Travel. We originally asked for $7,500, so the council members could have the option to go to a couple of conferences a year. There was need to cut that back to $3,000, and that was basically giving every council member one conference to travel to per year. We also cut back some of the council expenses, like for funerals and some of those kind of things, and then also the mayor expenses. So the mayor expenses were 1,500. He proposed to cut those down to 500. Council's original expenses were 1,000 that you guys could spend on certain things. Once again, a lot of it just goes to funerals. Cut that down to $750. That was another major change. The next one was admin salaries and wages. We proposed $130,000 to keep up with the salaries and those kinds of things. Proposing to bring that down to 105,000 and move some of my salaries, as I do do things in the water account, move part of my salary over to the water fund and have that come out of there. Going down, I don't think there's any other major changes, except we originally had $120,000 in for the lawsuit. We bumped that to 150,000 in the budget retreat and kept it at 150,000 for legal expenses. We did take down a little bit the admin professional services by $50,000. This originally was budgeted at 79,000, brought it down to 29,000, got rid of, excuse me, temporarily postponed the storm drain impact fee study, because Ted Mickelson is working on a grant right now that actually may cover that. And so he is filing the paperwork for that. If he gets it, great. If he doesn't, then we'll need to put it in the budget next calendar year. That was a nice little savings right there. And we're gonna jump down a little bit to
Yeah, so Chris, can you slow down while some notes are being taken?
You bet. Okay, the next big one is gonna be the Roads Department. The counts start with 4410. Severn, sorry, you're having to squint so much. It is small, I know. Okay, on the roads. This one is a tricky one, because this, originally the employees asked for $973,500 to cover various aspects of repairs, buildings, and those kind of things within the city. It went through a couple iterations, but where we stand today is we're keeping the salaries the same. And really, the difference and changes start with the Roads Discretionary Funds, meaning these are the funds that the Roads Department can use at their discretion, how they want to do it, just backing that down by $1,000. Backing down Roads Fuel and Supplies by $2,000. They've kind of been averaging between $8,000 and $12,000 a year, backing that down a little bit. The miscellaneous repairs to city facilities, this included originally the used waste oil boiler, I don't know if I'm calling it right thing, but taking that out of the budget this year.
Chris?
Yes.
Some questions. Fuel costs are going up, so why is our budgeted amount going down?
So a lot of, some of these are supplies, not necessarily all fuel. So we'll look at either cutting back on some of the supplies, just not necessarily cutting back on the fuel.
What, what Chris did
Jerry.
is he, he went and looked at our historical.
I'm sure.
And, yeah, that's not a perfect barometer. I mean, Fred, we could have a storm every day, and then all of a sudden our our fuel costs are gonna go through the roof. So it's, it's a rough estimate. The thing that I like to see, because within, and maybe this hasn't been fully explained, but within a sorry, within
There you go.
category, so like you've got this 4410. We can move money around
I get that.
at the mayor's discretion. So I'm okay with like cutting a few as long as I see that we're like, I don't know, street capital outlay equipment, if we have, if we have a little bit of buffer there, or some, something like that, you know? Otherwise, it does end up being a very, very tight budget.
Well, I guess that is my question, is there a buffer?
Yeah.
And and I do want to address, I'm hearing a lot of groans, understandably. I was groaning as I was helping in its preparation, but it it just seemed in terms of the timing with fuel prices, I mean, I'm talking as far as the taxpaying residents. I just think that with fuel prices being what they are, with food prices going up, it just seemed like a bad year to do a massive property tax increase. And so I think that just like all residents would be of necessity tightening their belts, we need to tighten our belts. And, and I mean, it's infuriating to me, the fact that we've got $150,000 set aside for legal, but it is where we are. And so that's just something that we have to, we have to address.
So Chris?
Mayor, with that being said, you know, I, we do have residents who are, are getting angry at the at our road conditions. And so we're putting, it seems to me that we're cutting back on things that they actually are requesting and wanting, and we're, we're making that decision for them, that they will be okay for another cycle of of roads not being repaired if we can't get to it, or we can't afford it based either on increase of gas prices, or increases of asphalt prices, or, you know, all of the above is happening. And so I think it would be proof of us when we have our, I know Town Hall is coming up, but that's one, some of the things that we need to have hard conversations with the residents so that they realize that we have cut back, even though there may potentially be an increase.
Right.
We have cut back on what it really costs to run this city, and there, everybody would have to take a, take a breath on that. But I don't know if some, if some will not be happy with us reducing services.
No, I, I agree. And and again, it, it's, it's really just a question of timing. It just seemed like, under the current, in the current economic environment, it just seemed like the right thing to do, in my mind.
So, Chris, could you go back to line 4410, 455? What did we cut out of that line?
So on, the line that's highlighted right there, the
That was that proposed, Corbett proposed, the oiling of the roads, I believe.
Oil, um
Yeah, the
Heating, the oil heating of the
The used oil.
Well, okay, the used oil, but this is streets general maintenance.
Yeah, this is something different.
He proposed maintenance for the roads as far as they're drying out and they crack. He wanted us to
So the five-year plan?
Yeah, the slurry.
Okay.
So what we did is do, we based the budget off of previous year's budgets of 186,000, so 86 coming from this line, and then 100,000 coming from the last line, 4415, 415, to at least keep the 180,000 in there. So some things can be accomplished. We didn't take it out, we, we reallocated. So 86 coming from line 4410, 455, and then the other 100 grand coming from dot 451, four, yeah, 451.
And pray that the state does not implement a gas tax holiday. And and so where was the oil, the oil boiler line?
The waste oil boilers come out of repairs to city maintenance facilities right up here, account, or line 4410 dot 270.
Um, I don't see that as changing unless I'm, it went from 45,000 to 10,000. Okay.
Yeah. I think there was some discussion, you know, to get the oil coming, to not, to put the system in, would actually be a third heating system within the city center, and you know, trying to figure out, is that the most economics, since we already have two other heating systems in there right now?
Okay, thank you.
Are we good on line 4410 dot 455, the reduction of streets general maintenance? And understanding that 86 is coming from there, and then 100,000 is coming from line 4415 dot 451.
Is that what we estimate for our classy road funds?
Yes. Once again, if gas taxes don't take a holiday. I haven't heard any more in the news about it, so I'm not sure where that stands.
I haven't heard anything else either, but it sure will impact our city.
Yeah.
How, by how much?
Because they, they would
Is it just one day?
No, they were talking about suspending him like
Suspending it for the summer.
The summer.
Like, when people are normally driving a lot. So for Memorial Day to Labor Day, we get, a lot more people are driving for their vacation. So if they, if they halt that gas tax, that would, would greatly impact our budget.
Thank you.
Okay, 4410 dot 740.
740, what was the first part?
4410 dot 740. Yeah, now Corbett puts this in there just for talking points. He knows we're not gonna put cash down on a building because we can't afford it, but looking at expanding the fire station or getting some kind of capital building to house the snowplows and the roads equipment, but back that 250,000 out, left the 18,000 in there, which is the payments on the snowplow truck, which is divided between here, snow plowing and water count. Then the last and the biggest hit to the budget is all the future savings account, can be your, I don't know what page it is, but it's the one that talks about transfers, account 4840. Yeah, it'd be actually 4850 would be the first count. Number $50,000 was gonna go to the savings for a future fire truck. $4,000 for a future ambulance and equipment and EMS. Four thousand dollars for a future ambulance and equipment in the EMS. Five thousand dollars for future snowplow equipment, five thousand dollars for additional road projects, and one thousand dollars for capital projects at the park. This was set up two years ago by the city council, and there, you get, those who are on, have to correct me if I'm wrong, but this was set up so we could start saving money and paying cash for things. By taking those out, that's sixty-five thousand dollars out, that is helping us balance this year's budget. If we didn't, yes.
If we don't use like all the money for legal, can we move it and move it over into some of these?
Yes.
Is that legal to do?
Absolutely.
That one, that one though does require us to open the budget.
Yep.
We do that typically a couple of times a year anyway, so it's no big deal. But we do have to do that in private hearings and whatever.
Okay.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah, for a budget our size, it's a huge change.
Those were the major changes that, um, from the last budget meeting we had to today.
So, Chris, if we, if we are not putting in those capital project funds this year, um, those accounts, what's in there currently will just sit. Will it put any, us in any jeopardy of not paying for our trucks on time or keeping our maintenance as scheduled for these capital projects?
No, the, what Craig Northup was gonna do with the hundred and five thousand dollars, he was going to have saved up, was put that as a down payment to keep the payment a little bit less on the new engine coming. What this means is we'll just have less money to put down, which will be a higher yearly payment.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
All right.
Is there anything significant in the, um, capital, the water fund?
Yeah. Nothing changed really, except moving some of my salary there, otherwise it's all exactly the same.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, well, if everyone is sufficiently unhappy, we can move on.
No, honestly, honestly, Mayor.
We are.
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make this sound like I'm unhappy at all, because I, knowing, you know, having gone through the committee meeting, having gone through, I didn't go through, but you and Chris went through a lot of meetings, I would just commend you for getting it this far. This, it's, it's not as hideous as I thought it was going to be.
Well, that's to Chris's credit, I just tried to give him high level, uh, that he was very, very valuable in helping us find ways to, uh, you know, certainly regrettable ways, but ways that we could make it work.
I, I loved hearing your general attitude about the, the current tax si- situation and trying to keep it as less painful, I, I appreciate that personally, and, and the citizens do too, and, and you'll, I think you'll hear that from most of the citizens. There will be a few that say spend more and fix more, but, but it's the right thing now, in my opinion, as well.
And I'm hoping that as things settle down, I mean, our, all our futures are uncertain, but I, I certainly hope as things settle down, then we can redirect resources to some of those more discretionary items and just improve the city overall, but this didn't seem like the year to do it.
Mayor, I do have one question for you. So on the enterprise fund, and Chris, maybe I'll need you to help me with this one. Um, because we're saying we're gonna move some of your salary over there, but I'm not seeing an increase on the six-one-one-zero. Or is it a new line item that I'm not seeing?
Jody, did you get that message? I guess he's muted.
Sorry, Jody, I kicked off too soon. Um, yes, so what I want to do is before the council, I want to get your thoughts on that first, before making adjustments to the rest of the budget. The general budget kind of dictates the capital projects and the roads and fire and the wa- um, snow plowing. And with this change into the water, I didn't want to do anything till get some direction from you guys.
Okay, and this is, you know, I know, I don't know all the laws around enterprise funds, but this is not gonna get us in trouble, correct?
No, so I do, do work in the water fund, and so I can build towards that fund. Where we start getting troubles, transferring monies from water fund to general fund. Um, some, a lot of cities do it with their electrical, but we've always kept our enterprise fund sustainable on its own, and not making too much money that it's too much profit to transfer.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks again, Chris. Thanks for the comments from everybody. Okay.
Oh, one, one other question. So, we, we talked about this representing a small increase in property taxes. Do we have any kind of percentage estimate what that would be?
Well, uh, yeah, I believe that, is that part of the information that we're still waiting on, Chris?
Yes. With home valuations, I don't know if the assessor's been around, but with home valuations and how homes have appreciated greatly in the past twelve, eighteen months, it's just unknown.
And that's what's really difficult, is the home prices went up really high in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and yet we're heading into a recession. So that won't be considered because that's this year, and it's based on last year, last year's values, and so it'll, it'll, and when, as pri- home prices go up, our, our tax rate goes down.
Have we-
Right, just the rate, not the tax.
Yeah.
Have we looked into any like fee structure, something that, because I, I look at property taxes as probably the most inefficient way of, of generating revenue for the city, because we're getting what? Twenty cents on the dollar, thirty cents on the dollar, you can correct me there, Chris, but is there a way we could do, find ways that, you know, I can, as a city, we can, you know, increase David's expenditure by ten dollars and the city gets ten or nine or eight instead of this less efficient way?
So Jody actually sent some interesting information about Mapleton charging a road fee. And I hadn't heard of that before, but it looks like they're working and it's, they've legally figured a way out to do that. Whoopla used to be able to do that for us, our Woodland Hills Property Owners Association, it was a small amount, but it was a hundred and fifty dollars a year times all the properties, and it'd bring in eighty thousand dollars unencumbered. Um, so there are some fees.
I think your point is very well made. I just, I, I think you gotta be careful that we don't discuss it as a non-agenda item, but I, I think that the road fee that Chris was talking about, that is something that we probably should bring up at an, at a subsequent council meeting to discuss the possibility.
Yeah, but one thing we, just to answer your question directly, the state controls what we can and cannot bill for. So that's why, you know, a lot of cities have gotten into EMS and have gotten into, um, water, electricity.
Parks.
Parks, is because that increases the scope of what they're able to bill for. But like, we can't just say, we're, we're going to charge every resident five hundred dollars a year to live here, the state won't let us.
Well, exactly, and that's what I'm saying, because I've been doing a lot of research on a lot of other cities' budgets, and I'm just seeing revenue streams that we don't have, and I'm thinking, is there a more efficient way? Because if I can decrease, and this pertains more to this budget, so I think it would fall into the agenda, is if we can, you know, bill David, all of us, say ten dollars more each year, but drop property taxes, you know, thirty, it's a win for both of us.
Absolutely.
And that's what I'm wanting to make sure that we're looking at, is, is there a better way for us to generate the revenues that we need versus just continuing to ratchet on that property tax?
Well, and, and I, I do like, uh, the idea of the, the, I would assume that since Mapleton was able to do it, legal.
Yeah, that, well, the one thing you gotta be careful, Pleasant Grove got-
Pleasant Grove was in a law lawsuit over it.
Oh, okay, but we don't want that.
But Mapleton learned from it, and so they've done things differently. I've talked to a few council people over there, and, and I think it's worth us checking out.
Right, yeah.
The other thing I thought of, because I, I heard that Spanish Fork is, is building their new, uh, rec center, the rap tax. The only bad thing is, the rap tax is a percentage of the sales tax. So again, where we don't have much sales tax, we do have some now, but where we don't have a whole lot, I don't know that we really benefit a whole lot from that, but maybe we could, maybe we could, even if we were to get a little bit and just tell people, look, every Amazon purchase you make contributes to our park.
Right.
Or something like that.
Yeah.
And then we have to convince Amazon to actually put in something so we can recycle all those boxes.
Yeah, no, great points, and I think that, uh, let's, let's make it a, a future agenda item to explore all those possibilities. I think, uh, that's definitely a direction that we would benefit from heading. Okay. With that, we'll, we'll move on to the, uh, next item, which is discussion items for April twenty-sixth town hall meeting. So, uh-
Budget?
Yeah.
Water, roads?
Perfect.
Lawsuit.
Lawsuit? Yeah.
Yeah, carefully.
Suits, yeah.
Um, so I mean, this is, this is my first, so, uh, I'd certainly welcome, uh,
I would also-
From all of you.
I would also recommend, um, that rather than it being a presentation style, it really be a dialogue, and with as many questions as the residents want to give us.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I liked the last one, Wendy did, I thought it was really good. As far as the questions, I don't know about anyone else, but how the residents were able to submit questions?
They submitted the questions prior, and that helped, um, um, just to sort them, so that we weren't having, um, repetition all the time. And we also weren't staying on one subject that we could move on, so if some questions were similar, they could be kind of combined into one question to be asked, and then that way we kept on a timed schedule, but we also got, um, a diversity of questions, and so I think a lot of people appreciated that.
And then there was also a little bit of an open forum, so people could come to the mic and ask questions, and, but then Wendy had, she had, Mayor had other questions, like other things that she could present in between to fill the gaps. So she kind of did a little spiel at first, and then there were resident questions, and then people could come to the mic, and then she had other things to fill in.
And she, she, she kind of pointed to each of us up there and said, you know, if we were over that area to answer that question on, on behalf of the council, and then other people could pop in if they wanted to, but we limited it to questions only, not statements. And then, um, you know, a certain, we had time limits too, just like we do in, on our regular public hearing, so that people were being more thoughtful to the rest of the people in the audience, and they weren't taking all the time.
Okay, yeah, and I wasn't that last one.
We also orchestrated events.
Yeah, you could tweak it however you want, I just thought that that was kind of a good format.
Yeah.
And in your, other years past, that was really helpful, is, um, I guess it was probably Jody, we made posters that had to do with our budget. It showed all in different, you know, pie charts and whatnot, that showed where the revenue was going, um, what amount of taxes we brought in, where we're short, things like that, and we, we kept them on this wall for a couple of years. Um, until they became obsolete, I suppose, but that was helpful as people were coming early to walk around the room and see, in there, and see the posters and be able to visualize some of the discussion points. So, we might want to do that on, um, more than just the budget, you know, talking about our, our roads, talking about the water infrastructure replacement, talking about the lawsuits, there may be visuals that will help people um, see prior where we're at.
Okay, thank you, good suggestions. All right, so we'll, uh, with respect to the input, budget, water, roads, lawsuits, questions in advance.
Don't have, don't have us introduce ourselves. We did that one year and it took like half the meeting.
Can we do some good news things too?
I think that's a great suggestion, okay, yep.
I'm just saying.
Very good suggestion.
Some of the good things we're trying to do.
Yeah, no, I, and, and- That is important to highlight, yeah, and, and Woodland Hills is an awesome place.
I think another thing is giving Janet the opportunity to have a table for people to sign up to volunteer for certain things, because they'll all be in the room, and it might be a good thing as they walk by to say, well, yeah, I could help out with that little thing right there, right? Just another way of engaging in person.
I'll do it.
Okay.
And if we could even have maybe a handful, just, you know, one or two or three of our volunteers that we could maybe honor, and just say a thank you, public thank you for some of them, that might help you get a little more volunteer signups.
Okay.
You could just say, anyone who volunteers with the city, stand up, right, kind of thing, and then, and say their names and what committees they, they represent currently.
Briefly say maybe what they do.
That would be cool.
And then, and then we could say, if you want to volunteer for something, look on that table and meet Janet afterwards.
But yeah, you could, you, I like that, have them stand up, say what they do, and then maybe we could, you know, give them a, I think that would be nice.
Yeah, oh.
We can't afford a plaque, but we could plaque.
The what?
We can't afford a plaque, but we could plaque.
Right, yeah, well, plaques just collect dust. All right, thank you. Um, so, next item, number seven, uh, recommendation to appoint Tim Larson to the city finance committee, and council member Pratt.
Yay.
Yeah, so, um, we appreciate, we only have, uh, three, uh, volunteer members, three citizen members of the finance committee, and so when we, um, lost one, we needed to replace him. And so, fortunately, Bob moved out, and we've been looking for someone who either was a CPA or had that level of experience, and so, um-
So Tim came to caucus night, and he introduced himself as a CPA. And I said, CPA, we're looking for a CPA, and I, I immediately texted our finance chair and said, your neighbor, go see your neighbor. And so, that was nice that, uh, they were able to make that connection.
So anyway, that's-
Because he wanted to serve somewhere, he said, I'd like to serve in the city, I'm new.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a point for you, a place.
That's perfect, because I know that Mike Taylor also said that, uh, he was really hoping we could get a CPA on, on the committee too, so.
Yeah.
He fell right into our laps.
He called me, Mike actually called me the day before, on that Monday, to put it in the newsletter, that we need to find a CPA. Until then, on that Tuesday, when Tim said, I'm a CPA, I went, huh.
All right, perfect. Any other, uh, comments? All right, thanks, Dave. Uh, parks, trails, and recreation recommendation for board members, council member Lund. Is this the controversy you warned me about?
No.
That's to come, that's to come.
Definitely not. Um, we have a list of names, do you want me to read those names now?
Yeah, I think that would be useful.
Okay, so we have, um, Sherry Berger, Natalie Tanner, John Wallace, Michelle Crump, um, and Brad, I can never say his last name, Cropple?
Yeah.
Um, who would be on the executive committee. Before, Parks and Trails had quite a large list of names, and the problem that they had is that a lot of them didn't participate in the meetings or weren't there on a regular schedule, and so it's been hard for them to vote on anything because they didn't have a quorum. So, we made it, you know, to a smaller list. I had Sherry reach out to everybody and make sure that they would be committed to be there, so, those are the names.
Perfect, and Jody, did you get all those then?
And Michelle Crump.
And then, did, do they vote to choose who of them will be the chair?
Yes. And we're recommending, um, a chair and a vice chair.
If you can let us know once they've chosen, that would be helpful.
Hopefully this next meeting.
And so the number of vacancies, every, so, we're not selecting some from this list, we are just adopting the list, and they will all be extended positions on?
Yes, between chair, vice chair, secretary, all that.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. Any discussion on that? All right, item nine, uh, proposed resolution adopting the twenty-twenty-two MAG pre-disaster mitigation plan, council member Malkovich.
Yes, so, um, MAG, we're a member of MAG Mountain and Association of Governments that covers Summit, Utah, and Wasatch counties. In your packet is a, a three-hundred-and-eighty-two-page document. I don't know if you had a chance to read it all, but I, I did, and, um, I will give you kind of a recap of why we are asked to adopt this as a resolution to support their plan. Um, in twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, they were working on this, um, to get it ready, uh, asked by the state and federal government. um, to get it ready, uh, asked by the state and federal government. There are certain requirements that are put in place, um, with regards to Department of Emergency Management. And so this is to fulfill the federal, state and local hazard mitigation planning responsibilities. And so we are part of that. This, the scope of that is, um, basically a pre-disaster mitigation that is statewide. So this helps the state if there's a, is an emergency, that there, that there is a cooperation between local level and the state, um, through MAG, um, and the Department of Emergency Management. Um, on the process, I'm trying to, I'm skipping through some of the pages so that I can just kinda give you the highlights. Um, but, um, we are, the planning process, they started, um, really in October of, of twenty eighteen, and then they, um, went for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty in each of these counties and participated, um, probably Mayor Frey probably as, uh, the member who sits at the MAG table. She was probably involved in some of these discussions as you are with MAG and COG now, and, um, we were, our Woodland Hills projects were, were discussed at that time specifically to Woodland Hills. Um, let me get to our page. Um, specifically to Woodland Hills, the things that we have done that are put in there, some cities have a lot of mitigation efforts. Um, we participate in what's called NFIP, which is the National Flood Insurance Program. If you remember after the fires, they were mapping our city, and so we participate in that. City Code Chapter Ten is in the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, and Chapter Nine is a Flood Hazard and Natural Hazard Study Requirement for New Development in Hazard Prone Areas, which we know. That's why we're doing the things with the toolers, right? Because every sys, every property now has to have a hazard mitigation study done prior to development. Now, the NFIP program, it makes federally backed flood insurance available to communities that have adopted this and enforced the flood management ordinance. And so that was one reason we did that as well, so we are a participating member of that. Um, some of the mitigation, um, management, where is it? The mitigation strategies including cor, uh, incorporating flood, uh, mitigation into local planning, which we have done, form partnerships to support floodplain management, which is our regional council, limit or restrict development in floodplain areas, which is what we have done, um, with our hazard assessment, adopt and enforce building codes and development standards, which we do, um, which is basically the International Building Code, um, improve the stormwater management planning, uh, which means completing a stormwater drainage study, which we are hoping to do, which we had to take out of this budget, but that's one of the things that really should be on our list of things to do so that we're in compliance. Adopt policies to reduce runoff, um, which would be stormwater firefighting, et cetera, just making sure that wa, that we have a place for our runoff. Use natural systems preventing, uh, preserving wildlands, et cetera, our open spaces vegetation, and then, um, enhancing our infrastructure. They also have another, a section just on wildfires, um, that, um, pertains to us. They talk a lot about the, what happened to during the Bald Mountain, Polk Creek fires and some of those resources that are there, but I, I encourage us and, and recommend that we adopt this policy as the city of Woodland Hills and, um, in compliance with state and federal.
Thank you, Carrie. Uh, so just to be clear, as far as our obligations by adopting this plan, I mean, in terms of...
No, I...
Yeah, okay, and that's what I'm getting at, or legislatively, so this is, it sounds like everything that we are sort of ratifying by adopting this plan is already underway, but it doesn't oblige us to do anything in particular that, uh, might be, uh, restricting sources.
Right, it's, it's a, it's an opportunity, right? The, our partnership with the work that has already been done by the region, which is Mountain Association of Governments and MAG, and the state and federal.
Okay, thank you. Any comments?
Question?
Yes.
Okay, what, uh, stormwater management is part of our general plan, and I'm wondering if I could maybe get a little bit of write-up from you that we could look at, to put into our general plan with, with summary and so forth, what that is, yeah. Thanks, okay.
All right, very good. Uh, we'll move on to item ten, then, the City Council Reports. Councilmember Hilliard.
Uh, so no new meetings on the nine-one-one, um, Special Service District. Um, not much has changed with the South Utah Valley Solid Waste District. Um, our last meeting, we did talk about maybe changing that name and, and making it a little more, uh, universal there. We're talking a lot about the new transfer station, which is underway. Things are going well there, so hence part of the rebranding process. Um, one thing that we did talk about though is currently right now, we have a thirty-three, and this is district-wide, so Woodland Hills is such a small fraction of our district that it really almost doesn't matter, but it's still something that can help. Um, when it comes to recycling, we currently have about a thirty-five percent contamination rate. Um, so that means that things that are not supposed to be in our recycling bins are. If we can get down to, and again, like I said, Provo, Spanish Fork, they're the ones that really need to be focusing on this, cause they can drive that, this needle better than we can, but if we can get it down to twenty-seven percent contamination rate, there will be a big boon for the little transfer station. They will actually be able to make quite a bit more on recycle than they currently are. Um, for the first time in a few years, we're currently making money. The transfer station's making money off of recycling. It's actually been a, a loss in the pa, in the near past. Um, and so that's, that's nice that we're headed in that direction, but I did ask Jody, I sent it over to her, so she's put on the website, kind of what can be recycled, um, and then they get, and they just pushed and said, "Hey, if, if you can put your pizza boxes in the recycle, it just needs to pass the shake test. If you hold the box, shake it, and you don't hear anything, it's good to go." So pull out all the crusts that my kids didn't eat, and you're good to go. So that's all I have.
Okay, very good. Now, as far as the transfer station making money, what does that mean for us? Uh, does that mean that we get a discount, or, uh, I'm just curious how that translates into, uh, something?
Mm-hmm. No, currently, the, right now, it really, it, it helps them keep their rates low.
Okay.
So it helps us lose less money.
Okay.
Or our expenses. So we want the transfer session, station to continue to make money. Um, the new era board also, so the new era landfill that we co-own, um, as members of the district, um, that is one of the greatest landfills, obviously I'm biased, but in the nation because of our rates. Our rates are so low, and they're locked in fairly tightly going forward.
Right.
Um, so our, our amount we're paying the transfer station each week will stay consistent, um, for the most part. It won't be going up at all.
Okay.
Beyond the little bit we've budgeted for already.
Great, thank you. All right, um, Councilmember Kinnison, CWPP.
Okay, I wanna rem, remind everyone of three dates coming up. April sixteenth, this Saturday, uh, we're going to be celebrating Easter with the fire truck and candy to kids and so on. Appreciate, uh, the help we've gotten from Janet on that and...
We remind everyone to, we'll, we'll create something out, well, like we did with Santa, we will have a live tracking system.
Perfect.
We'll be sending out that morning, we'll post it on social media, we'll send it out in newsletter format that morning, and also we'll put it up through Everbridge so that everyone, um, has no doubt where the Easter bunny is on that day, and they, that way they don't have to come out and wait for so many hours and get it.
Are you able to be to that on, uh, I was, I was, I was, I was trying to find a volunteer to help navigate it, and you're really good at letting the public know where we are.
Well, it's because my phone has the location.
Okay, okay, so...
That's what I'm telling you, is the location will say, "Easter Bunny," and my phone will be there, and that, that sends the signal to everybody who wants to use that.
So we need a navigator. I'm somewhat consumed with something else, so we might need, uh, someone to help us.
Well, we have a chat app that we try to run on.
Okay, okay, all right.
So, who knows, who could drive, Easter Bunny's chauffeur will contact.
Perfect, okay.
And the mayor will be there waving and...
I would not recommend me being the navigator. My wife has to direct me out of parking lot, so I am a directionally challenged.
Um, it's ten AM, Mayor, I told you eleven, but it's ten now.
And it takes about four hours to go through the town, just so that everybody's aware and is patient.
We had initially said eleven, but now it's ten.
Yeah, ten to two is basically what it takes to get through all of our city. And now that we're adding some more in Summit Creek and also in, um, we actually have homes in, um, four seasons, it may even be just a touch longer because we have to go there and that.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll do some Facebook Lives that we can show people inside and ask people close pictures.
And we had a wonderful anonymous, uh, donor who donated the money for candy, so it's all purchased and sitting in Jody's office tempting her. It's been there for about a week.
It's, 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 it's ready to go. It's a great, it's a great thing.
Nope. They're in, they're bigger packages, individual, like a box of Mike and Ike's or a bag of, anyway, just different things.
So we're excited about Saturday. Uh, May twenty-first is the Fire Expo still, I think, and, uh, that will be here at the fire station. May thirty-first is the first day of chipping, so that's the day after Memorial Day, uh, we will start the chipping. So we will chip the piles, and when you're chipped, you can't make another pile. That's kind of the understanding we want out there.
I put that in the newsletter so that some people are...
People still do, though.
I know.
So...
If you have a stacking, as soon as your pile is done, you can move it to another location or rake it out. If you have a question, Jesus, put in someone all over the...
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Councilmember Lund, South Utah Valley Animal Shelter.
Uh, they, they did have a meeting this last week. I actually missed the meeting because I had a work crisis, um, that I had to take care of, but they just were talking about the budget still. I reached out to her to find out. They did propose a ninety-eight-thousand-dollar budget increase, and those funds come from the communities that support it, so I reached out to her to find out what percentage or what amount that would be for our city, and I didn't get a response. So I'll get that number and I'll get it to you.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, staff raises.
Yeah, I mean, I get it.
They...
Still have... I'm, I'm having to do the same thing, you know, you...
They had employees that hadn't gotten raises in a long time. They have four that are full-time, and one of them, I guess there was one of them that basically wrote a letter and said, "If you don't give me a raise, I'm going to quit," kind of a thing.
And I do see that there was another, um, piece of legislation that was passed that they have to be compliant with, so then I think that is one of the factors.
So she did, to her credit, and I have the documentation for it, she did a big study of other similar facilities and what the wages were. She actually did quite a intensive study to make sure that the salaries were in line, but it's about ninety-eight thousand dollars and some change, increase, so that's split amongst, I don't know how many, six cities or eight cities, something like that, so...
Fortunately, it's based on how many animals they collect.
Yeah, I think our percentage is small, and that's what I tried to get, reach out to her and find out was...
So Provo's gonna get the majority of that.
And they have a big budget, so they'll be okay.
Although their malls failing, so...
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, uh, Councilmember Malkovich, Utah Lake Commission.
We have knocked, uh, next since our last meeting, and, uh, our next meeting we will be doing a tour of the COVID recovery project, which is, um, it's not going on, but probably itself.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Pratt, South Utah Valley Wat, uh, Municipal Water Association and Nebo Water Conservation District.
Yeah, so, um, the only thing I have to report is that we got the preliminary numbers from the sale of that property. Um, our portion that we should be getting is around seventy-eight thousand dollars. So that's good news. Um, I'm betting that that money, that the initial investment came out of our water fund, so I'm hoping that that money will go straight back into our water fund and, uh...
And that for our ARPA funds.
Go, yeah, well...
Carrie's spending it already.
Oh, no, I'm just, it's just, some cities have gotten millions and millions. Our ARPA funds in ours is seventy-eight thousand, so it could just be...
Our, our ARPA funds are seventy-eight thousand? Oh, great.
Some cities got millions and millions.
Yeah.
Also population.
Well, there you go. Anyway, so that's, that's the only thing, that's the only business we've had, and we haven't had any meetings, so...
Okay, thank you. Uh, for myself, SESD, I attended the board meeting today. Um, nothing to report other than rising energy costs, uh, is always a concern and availability, but nothing that really concerns us other than as electricity patrons, but, uh, and then the COG MAG meetings were both canceled because of, uh, I guess it was probably spring break, but they were, they were both canceled. Okay, uh, possible items for upcoming city council agendas. Uh, we did talk about, um, revenue sources, and I think that is a good one to, uh, add to this list.
I would like us to continue having budget discussions during the week. I think it's important that we really look, make sure not open the door in the future, they have plenty of time for open discussions.
Yeah.
And that if anyone does have additional questions, if you're, if you need, you can talk to us.
Absolutely, okay.
Especially after we have time to highlight that some more.
I don't like being sprung on you day of. I thought that was a pretty effective budget strategy.
At one point, we actually had the budget as a line item on our work session that we talked about, if I could, if you can, for just a little bit, all year long, because I, as I've been talking with other, um, councils, that things work on it all year long, so it's not such a big headache, oh, just in the spring, but that they, you know, they have their department heads, their companies, or business owners, isn't, you know, and so it might be helpful...
Yeah.
To do, to figure out how that might work for us in the future.
Okay, no, good, good suggestion.
Yeah, that's, that's the same thing I was wanting as well. It's just current budget utilization talking points.
Okay.
Or questions.
Okay, perfect.
Well, you replaced it.
You know, it's just, they can't hear you, but you don't talk a lot of stuff, I thought, because you're too much, you know?
Wow.
Wow. My, 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 my wife tells me I'm talking way too much.
I mean, Ben brings him an extra pad and he has two microphones.
Yeah.
What's going on?
We're just trying to butter David up.
This, this is the old general conference log.
Or a press conference.
Hey, that does, yeah.
Different type of speaker, though.
All right, well, we'll close, um, the, uh, the work session, uh, and let's, uh, resume at seven forty, eight minutes.
Stretch.
Yep. Okay, we will, uh, call this meeting to order again. Uh, we're missing one member. Okay.
No, I'm not a big fan of moving through the meeting. Brent, I'm also with you. Don't ever put me as navigator either.
Oh, okay, perfect. Well, now we know who the, who not to have leading us. All right, uh, yeah, mics on and speak into the microphone, please. Okay, uh, we'll call the meeting to order, and, uh, Councilmember Kinnison, will you, uh, lead us in the pledge, and then the invocation by Councilmember Hilliard?
Please stand and repeat the pledge after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are so very grateful for this wonderful city the which we have, that Thou hast provided for us. We are so very grateful for our wonderful residents and for their kindness and their loyalty and their willingness to serve and help each other. We pray this day that as we start this city council meeting, that Thou wilt guide us, and let Thy Spirit direct us to do that which...
and let thy spirit direct us to do that which is best for our residents. We pray that thou continually also bless our mayor as he leads us, as well as our city employees, that they may be safe, protected, and that their families may also be protected in their absence. We are grateful for their sacrifice, and we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, so we will begin the public comment portion of our meeting. Just as a reminder, public comments are limited to two minutes or less. Comments submitted via email need to be received prior to 3:00 PM. Emailed comments will not be read aloud during the meeting, but will be distributed to the council and included in the official record. With that, do we have some comment? Okay, Ben?
Ben?
Yeah, please. Do you want me, is this going to be such that I should time you, or is it going to be brief?
Um, it's fun, we can see how it ends.
Okay, yeah, we'll give you some pressure.
Ben Burnley with Summit Creek. This goes back just regarding the request to vacate the portions of road. It sounds like, you know, we've done the presentation, you've all had your chance to discuss it, there's been the public hearing, all the questions have been answered. I'm hoping, we were kind of hoping there would be a vote tonight, I realize there's not. It's not on the agenda to vote tonight, and I understand, talking with the mayor, that one of the items is getting approval from that one particular property owner who is adjacent to Eagle Nest. I guess a couple of questions. When do you anticipate you would vote? And then as far as the individual that you are asked looking for the signature, the public notice, hearing notice went out. I've tried to call, I've sent a letter. Is there a point where if you, we just don't get a response, you just move on, or is this a dead deal if we don't get that signature?
I don't have an answer for that. I would have to probably ask our city attorney on that point unless someone here has experience in that specific regard. Yeah, I...
How long has the request been out? How many weeks or days?
I don't know.
Maybe it was a public hearing.
The 14 days, then.
That's when you sent the request out to the property owner?
Did you have a public hearing notice?
I know the public hearing notice was 14, but was your letter that you, reaching out, was that prior to the public hearing comment, or just a few days ago, or?
I think, so I tried calling a couple times over the last two weeks. I don't know if it's coming.
The letter, the certified letter is registered?
No.
Okay, so the letter should be sent certified or registered so that they can find it.
Okay, I can resend it.
So it's...
Um, I'm probably over two minutes, but I guess, kind of circling back, and I don't know if you can, like you said, you may not be able to answer, but, like, what are the next steps, right?
Right, so I'll have to inquire and then get you a roadmap. As far as I know, our ordinance does not, I mean, because I know that in certain circumstances, like with respect to lawsuits, you know, if you can't serve something on a party, you can use public notice mechanisms to effectively serve them, so I, but I don't know if our ordinance allows or provides for that, and if not, maybe there's a default rule, but I don't know what that would be. Yeah, do, you want me to restart the timer, then?
How am I in time? Was I overzealous?
Well, I actually stopped timing you once we started talking. It seemed like that I was too hard to track.
I'm gonna talk very quickly so that Dave can have his mic back. So Steve Dicker from Summit Creek, I think one of the questions that we ought to think about is who the certified letter should come from, whether that should come from the city, or whether it should come from Summit Creek. You may want to just ask legal counsel that before we decide to follow up with the certified letter.
Okay, and the way the ordinance is presently drafted, it does not specify that. I guess I have been under the assumption that since it's Summit Creek Development that is seeking to undertake this, that the responsibility would be theirs, but I'll ask, I'll include that.
We can do it twice, you know, if you do it in a public deal, which I just want to make sure that we're overstepping our bounds, that's the end of the question.
Yeah, no, I don't see that as being overstepping at all if you were to send it out, and if you wanted to get it underway, I think that would actually be advisable so that you can get that signature for the letter.
Yeah, as it's your request, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I believe that's everybody. Anybody else here that cares to make any public comment? All right, and then we'll close the public comment portion and move on to item 15.
Can we take the consent agenda individually on these three?
Yes. Okay, item 15. Now, I need to check my dummy notes to make sure I got the right vote here.
If I have a motion, you know, we'll come with it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so approval of January 25th, 2022, city council meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Malkovich.
I'll second it.
And a second by Councilmember Lunt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item 16, approval of the March 14th, 2022, city council meeting minutes.
I haven't seen those, and I just...
We're tabling those, because they're not yet complete.
Okay, tabled. And then item 17, February 2022 financials.
I'd like to make a motion to review these again next council meeting. I've got a couple of questions that I want answered, and I just didn't have time to set an appointment with Chris. Yeah, that's my motion.
Okay.
Seconded.
Seconded. All right, we have a motion to effectively table this until next meeting, and by Councilmember Hilliard, and a second by Councilmember Lunt. All in favor?
Malkovich.
Or what did I go?
Lunt. It's okay.
What did I say?
Lunt.
Oh, sorry.
It's all good, I just smiled.
Okay, Councilmember Malkovich, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The only thing I would ask is that with the questions that you have, that you send those questions not only to Chris, but to all of us as well?
Easy.
Just so we can review them before the meeting the next time.
Love that, thank you.
Okay, very good. Item 18, business in discussion. Ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 7, indemnifying city officials, employees, and volunteers.
So move.
This would be a roll call, right?
I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Malkovich, and seconded by Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinniston?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Motion carried. Jody, just as a practical matter, are you keeping track of this? Okay, so I don't need to be writing this down as we're moving along, okay. All right.
Part of the notes.
What's that?
Part of the minutes.
Okay, perfect. All right, item 19, approval to reallocate road funds for, actually, that doesn't need a vote, right? Because that's within...
No, it's not needed, it's not by a resolution.
Okay, so that one, I've already authorized it, so we'll consider that one addressed. Item 20, resolution adopting the 2022 MAG pre-disaster mitigation plan.
I will move to adopt that plan.
Okay, that is a motion by Councilmember Malkovich.
I'll second it.
And a second by Councilmember Lunt. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item 21, resolution appointing individuals to serve on the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Committee established by the Woodland Hill City Council as presented by Councilmember Lunt.
I'll make a motion that we approve the list of members of the executive committee.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Lunt, seconded by Councilmember Hilliard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, resolution appointing an individual to serve on the Finance Committee established by the Woodland Hill City Council.
I move that we approve that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Pratt?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinniston. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item 23, resolution adopting February 2022 check dispersments.
So since we tabled the financials earlier, should we table that as well?
I would entertain such a motion.
Well, I guess, I guess that's a question, because they are different things, so do you have any concerns over the check dispersments?
I don't have any concerns of check dispersments.
I'm good. I just thought they might, you might have thought they were...
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 February check dispersments.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Pratt?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinniston. Let's see, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, yeah. So I, we have had some updates on the legal front, so I do think it would be worthwhile to do a brief closed session because of the nature of it, and as per the statute, discussing an individual's character, professional competence, physical or mental health, strategy sessions to discuss collective bargaining, or reasonably, pending a reasonably imminent litigation. So I will entertain a motion.
I move that we move into a closed session.
Okay, Councilmember Kinniston?
I'll second that.
And seconded by Councilmember Pratt. Is that a roll call?
That's a roll call, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinniston?
Yes.
And Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, we will now...
Oh, we have to wait till she does that.
Okay, so now we are back, and...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Malkovich.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinniston, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.
See ya.
Thanks, Chris.